I don't think I have skipped all my.
Nothing.
Nothing to shoot at, but nothing to shoot.
30 seconds left. What's the problem is?
Got time for quick now.
That's the old Dina adoption.
Of course.
I was thinking about the address instead of what I worked.
Starts asleep in college.
Yeah.
That's me right now.
Sorry, I was at the chamber event.
Let me be clear, I need more than that today. I just don't.
That's why I went. I'm good because there's no alcohol. Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Lord, keep a leash on my tongue.
All right, so as we get the high sign, we will be ready.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, September 9th, City Council meeting for the city of Xenia. At this time, I will ask everyone to please rise for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Andy Wagner of Faith Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Branham.
Thank you. Got to spare. Dear God, our Father, Creator of all that exists, giver of every good and perfect gift, we thank you for the beauty and wonder of this world, for our place in it. We thank you for the freedoms and prosperity of this great nation. We thank you for the city of Xenia, all the wonderful people who live in it and work in it. Lord, we pray for all the public workers who by the sweat of their brow and the work of their hands keep things running smoothly. For all the first responders, paramedics, firefighters, police, we pray for your protection and strength. For all those in the medical field, nurses, doctors, hospital workers, nursing home staff, we pray especially during these terrible days of COVID, Lord, that you would keep them safe and healthy and continue to work your mercy through them. We pray for all the children of this city, for the schools and teachers and staff. And Lord, now for this city council meeting, for these public servants, we give you thanks and we pray for your blessing as they go about this work. Give them wisdom to make right decisions. Give them a spirit of discernment to do things honoring of you. Give them a spirit of peace and joy, a joy that comes only from serving you. We pray this in the name of the Savior and Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Branham, and thank you Pastor Andy Wagner for that invocation. At this time, we call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean? Councilman Branham?
Here.
Councilman Urschel?
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Smith?
Here. At this time, I will make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Rebecca Dean. She texted me earlier this evening due to absence, due to illness, and I will ask for a motion to excuse Councilman Urschel, who is out doing some family business at this time out of state. So do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. On our agenda is the approval of minutes from the August 26, 2021 regular meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written. Moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All right, seen none before us. Roll call to accept, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, on our agenda is a special presentation. There is none scheduled for this evening. We'll move right into audience comments at this time. This is the portion of the meeting where public is welcome to come to the podium, give your shalom and address for the record. Let me hear comments through four minutes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to thank, or excuse me, my name is Keith Morris. I live at 367 Hollywood Boulevard here in Xenia. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody that went out of their way to address my problem with my driveway. But now we have another problem because I feel somebody was more or less lying to me. I'm really upset about it now for the simple fact, all of our power comes from behind my house and from two houses on the left to the new house that they just built on the corner. Every bit of the power comes up our side yard. There's no power whatsoever underneath my driveway. That really upsets me. And besides that, two years ago, when they come out and raised the piece on the drain or on the meter, they never said one word about any power lines going underneath my driveway. Okay? So that really upsets me that someone pulled this stuff with me. Okay? And I talked to two other guys that come out and gave me estimates for my driveway, along with the other two that said they wouldn't guarantee it for the simple fact that it keeps sinking. The other two guys said, I'm not guaranteeing it either. So what am I supposed to do? Am I supposed to wait till somebody gets hurt on my driveway and sues me and I have to get an attorney and then turn it over to something else? I mean, we need to get something done and someone needs to tell me the truth. I'm getting really aggravated with this now. Okay? Somebody's going to get hurt on my driveway and sue me. It's just that simple. So I appreciate somebody giving me a call and let me be heard when they come out. Okay? That's the biggest thing. You know, they say this guy, this guy, and this guy from the city of Xenia come out, looked at him. Well, maybe if we're paying them, maybe we need to get somebody else that can do the job and pay them because they're not doing their job. Because I'm really aggravated about now. Okay? So, second of all, I brought up about this plat that's going to go at the end of Hollywood. Okay? Everybody keeps coming to my house and knocking on my door and asking me if I've heard about them. I said, yes, I've heard about it. Is there anything we can do? I said, well, I don't know. I went up and spoke my mind at the city meeting. They said, well, we can't do anything because it's a done deal. Well, when I was up here at the last meeting, the mayor, Mr. Scrivens, no one knew anything about it. So how is it a done deal? How come somebody representing the city of Xenia is telling everybody that calls them that it's a done deal? It hasn't even been before the council. So I say that's, I mean, take it for what it is. It's not a done deal yet. If you guys don't know anything about it, it's not a done deal. And I can name off five different people in my neighborhood that has personally talked to the man and they told him it was a done deal. I think somebody needs to, you know, get their story straight or something, you know. I don't understand. And you know, another thing is, I did speak to the superintendent. The superintendent says that the houses should be 1,800 square foot. That's what they need for the school system, you know, for taxes and stuff. And then somebody else has told him that a 16 would work. Well, why can't this person and the school system get together before they start, you know, telling what it has to be, what size the lots have to be and everything? I mean, it's just a bunch of stuff that doesn't make sense. You know, it makes me upset, for one, about my driveway and then now number two is this. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morris. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time? All right, moving on to old business. Our first item is Resolution 2021-GG as the second reading. This is accepting the amounts and tax rates certified by Green County Budget Commission for 2022, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying those tax levies to the Green County Auditor. This was introduced by the mayor on our August 26, 2021 regular meeting.
Thank you, sir. I'm moved for passage.
Moved for passage by the mayor. Do we have a second?
Scriv second.
Seconded by the Vice President Scrivens?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry. Clerk, did you get that? Seconded by Councilman Scrivens?
He did it and motion.
All right. Anyone have any comments, questions concerning this? All right, seen none. Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have no public hearing scheduled for this evening. Our first item of new business is Resolution 2021-HH titled Emergency. This is authorizing the submission of application for funding through the American Rescue Plant Act, known as ARPA, for the Glady Run Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project and the Wilberforce Sanitary Sewer Slip Linings Project and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayorman, would you like to explain this?
Yes, thank you, sir. The state of Ohio has recently announced the availability of this new grant program, which would provide funding for local water and sewer projects. As indicated, the grant program is being resourced through a portion of the state's monies that they've received through the ARPA funding. This competitive grant program had a really tight turnaround time for submission of applications. And one of the criteria for this is that goes into the evaluation of the projects is the ability to have the project completed within one year. So essentially, they're looking for fairly shovel-ready type of projects. While no matching money is required for the program, applications with matching funds will certainly be considered more favorably. Public service engineering and our city manager's office staff considered various opportunities and needs on the community, given the funding available. There are two projects that we've identified that we think we should submit applications for. These were described a little bit in your agenda report, but they include rehabilitation of the Aeration Tank Flow Distribution Chamber and Screening at the Glady Run Wastewater Treatment Plant and the Wilberforce Sanitary Sewer Slip Linings Project, which would again slip line those sanitary lines in that general vicinity. Now, the total project cost for the Glady Run Plant Project is estimated to be $3,109,128, and the Wilberforce Project is estimated at about $750,000. City's pledged a 25% local match commitment for each project, maiming to $777,282 and $187,500 respectively. It is not likely we believe that both projects would be awarded, which is in part why we looked at a larger project and a smaller project. So hopefully, at least some of that funding could roll our way. Because request for funding of projects has already been received by the Green County Engineer as a result of his deadlines it had. The city staff is requesting adoption of the attached emergency that we've provided, excuse me, resolution we've provided as an emergency this evening so that we can get all of those application materials into the state within the deadline that they've established.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to remind everyone, this is just the application process, not the actual project. So tonight, we would be voting for authorization of the application process. Do I have a motion to move forward with the application as an emergency?
So moved as an emergency.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by the Vice President. Further discussion on this matter? Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Ms. President. Just for the sake of people who don't see the same paperwork we do, total budgetary impact for both these projects will be $964,782 if all things go as we consider. Is that correct, City Mayor?
Yeah, and we should point out with that, Councilman, that these are projects that were already at some point in our queue that need to be done. And so those funds are available based on our five-year CIP.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seen none. Can I get a roll call?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Your next item, Resolution 2021-II, also titled Emergency. This is also authorizing the execution of an agreement with Process Pump and Seal Incorporated for the rebuild of a high-service pump number three at the water treatment plant and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayorman?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Another utility item this evening. Our water treatment plant staff recently observed a lot of excessive fluid leakage from high-service pump number three. This pump is one of three pumps that essentially push water out into our water system, and we have three of them to ensure that we have layers of redundancy. And that redundancy is a requirement under our licensure, under OEP. The staff at the water treatment plant contacted our normal service provider, which is Process Pump and Seal, and they evaluated and determined that the pumps, couplings, and impeller needed to be rebuilt. This type of work, or this pump, was last rebuilt in 2001, so we do have a couple decades of use on it. In order to ensure that the water system is sustained reliably and has this built-in redundancy with multiple pumps in place, it is quite important that we have this rebuilt as quickly as possible. Process Pump and Seal has completed similar maintenance projects for our pumps and pertinences really at both our water and wastewater plants, so we're familiar with them and comfortable with them. And given the emergent nature of this to bring this equipment back online, we think it is prudent to move forward with executing a contract with them without going through the normal bidding process, which is allowable under Section 9.16 of our charter. So again, this evening, we're requesting council approve this resolution as an emergency to authorize that project.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to authorize the agreement with Process and Pump?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Branham. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by the Vice President. Questions or comments regarding this?
Mr. President. City Mayor, you just stated it. Anything over $25,000 according to our city charter, Section 9.16, we have to approve. And this time, I'll be approving it. It's $27,000.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll get a motion. I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So our next item is Resolution 2021-JJ, also titled Emergency. So this is approving the final plat and authorizing a subdivider agreement for the Summerbrook South Section 4 subdivision and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayorman, would you explain that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The developer record for the Summerbrook subdivision, which is the Arnold Development Company, has decided to resume development of that subdivision. They are pursuing construction of Section 4, as indicated, which includes 34 single-family home lots, two open space lots, and an extension of Highlander Drive to Stevenson Road. The plan for Section 4 involves subdivision of 18.706 acres into 34 single-family home lots and again, the extension of Highlander all the way and the associated utilities with that all the way to Stevenson Road. There is a 7.296-acre section of planned open space adjacent to Stevenson Road and a section of that with a planned walkway. Your agenda report this evening includes graphics depicting these improvements. I think you should have pretty good understanding of what that looks like. The extension of Highlander Drive in this initial phase was required by planning and zoning as this will really substantially improve our emergency capabilities in terms of their access to have multiple means of ingress egress to that area off of Stevenson now as well. So on pursuit to land development code, the applicant submitted the construction design drawings for the planned street and utilities. Our engineering staff has reviewed these and found these drawings to be acceptable, so we checked that box. Additionally, Planning and Zoning Commission approved the Section 4 final plat on August 5th with conditions, finding that it met our code's approval for criteria for final plats and PED, final development plans. Developer has satisfied all Planning and Zoning Commission's conditions of approval, with the exception of plans for street lighting, which they are still working to finalize. Our code requires all final plats to receive Planning and Zoning Commission approval. Council has asked for approval additionally if there are required public improvements which have not been installed, which is the case here. So council is being presented with a resolution to accomplish that this evening. We are recommending an emergency approval of this resolution for the purpose of facilitating the expedited completion of that roadway and as courtesy to the developer. So we think that's appropriate if council is so inclined. So we are recommending Resolution 2021-JJ for approval this evening as an emergency.
All right, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve this final plat for Summerbrook?
So moved.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to put, moved by Councilman Scrivens and seconded by the mayor. Any questions or comments regarding this?
I would just add, Mr. President, that this was a plan that there was a fair amount of residential feedback. And between the Planning and Zoning Commission, that process and discussions with the residents, the developers, city planner, they arrived, I think, at a very reasonable outcome that allows for some additional development and to have most of the concerns of those residents addressed. So just applaud all those in the process and we applaud the public for coming out and providing input as well.
All right, thank you very much. All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, our next item is an administrative motion approving the schedule of bills in the amount of $147,468. Mr. Duke, do you have anything else to add to that?
I have nothing else to add.
Any questions for Mr. Duke on the schedule of bills? All right, seen none. I'll take a motion to pay the bills tonight.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
And President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next on the agenda is appointed officials' reports, and then we'll address some questions here that you have. So at this time, I will excuse our law director, who is out tonight, and move to our finance director, Mr. Duke.
I have nothing else to add this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Duke on any other matters? Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Mayorman?
Yeah, just one brief reminder for folks. Our second and final Neighborhood Night Out this year is scheduled for September 28th at Lexington Park. It's set for 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We will have a significant presence of city staff, significant presence of our Fire Division folks as well as Police Division. So we encourage folks to come out and take some time to learn about what those divisions are doing in terms of providing public safety services. And we think this is a special opportunity to really connect with residents in our historic East End to talk a little bit about the future of Lexington Park. So we are really encouraging residents to come out, council members to come out, so we can engage in some discussion on the future of that park. So again, that is September 28th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Lexington Park. I've provided you all with some pamphlets. If you desire to hand those out to folks as you see them to encourage them to attend, and that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything else for the city manager tonight? And Mr. Mayorman, so will you be able to contact Mr. Morris? Okay, thank you very much. So we'll get that taken care of, and we'll talk about your plat here in just a second. So moving on to reports of boards, commissions, and committees. Our first committee meeting is Property Management Committee, which was scheduled to meet on August 26. Mr. Councilman Scrivens, do you have anything to report on that?
Thank you, Ms. President. As you said, the Property Management Committee did meet on August 26, and a full body of members were there, including our city manager, assistant city manager, finance director, and our director of development. We went into executive session to discuss the transfer of a property. We're considering an offer on that property. Also, we discussed just overall, starting of the auditor's sales again. You know, when properties don't sell, it's sheriff's sale, three times out. Then the next move is the auditor's sale to finally dispose of the property and get it back in the private hands and make it a tax-producing entity. Also, we talked about the current status of the Carnegie Library, the old building there on East Church. We also talked about the Adult Recreation Center right across from there. That whole block is in need of a shot in the arm. I think everything's in need of a shot in the arm right now. And that's pretty much what we had talked about. Everything is moving, not at a great neck pace, but there are a few things that we want to then pass on to the Xenia CIC for final action. That's pretty much the story for the Property Management Committee.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Councilman Scrivens on the Property Management Committee? All right, thank you for that report. Next up is EDAB, Economic Development Advisory Board. That's chaired by Councilman Urschel. We'll table that to the next meeting for our September 23 meeting. Next up was Finance Budget Review Committee. I chaired that meeting with, also sitting on that is the Vice President and Councilman Branham. And we met on September 2nd last week. Most of our discussion was the city's allotment of the Affordable Care Act money. Xenia's portion, which was originally estimated to be over $5 million, has actually been reduced to $2.8 million. That will be dispersed over a two-year period. $1.4 million has been received this year by the city, and another $1.4 million is to be dispersed to the city in 2022. So discussion would be on where to use those monies. Still, a little gray areas as far as what we're allowed to spend that on, but it has to be COVID-related expenses. Or we, as a city, have to show a reduction in revenue due to COVID, and then those funds could be generally purposed for other repairs or infrastructure. So at this time, we're still debating on best use of those dollars. And also, we discussed briefly, our annual CIP report will be given to council during the month of October and voted by council for approval in our October meeting. And at that time, we'll have more to report from Finance and Budget Review. Mr. Mayorman, you and city finance director and the assistant city manager and the assistant finance director are also at that meeting. Did I miss anything? Would you like to add anything else to that?
Yeah, just to clarify, we are finalizing the five-year CIP. We estimate probably releasing that to council a little last week or so of September, so you have that well in advance of the October 1st deadline for that. And then, as you indicated, action is required by charter by the end of next month. So I'm working to finalize that. As we mentioned to the committee, this is a particularly difficult year this year because all of these federal monies have been made available earlier this year, mid-year through the state. And so there are a lot of these programs, you know, even as we've seen tonight in your action items, that weren't necessarily planned in our five-year CIP. So now we're having to adjust fairly quickly. And so that has put a little bit extra burden on Jared in completion of that. But again, we'll have it to council here in a week or two.
All right. And I'd like to thank the Vice President and Councilman Branham for attending that meeting. Do you guys have anything else you'd like to add? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So next is Planning and Zoning Commission. That meeting was scheduled for September 2nd. It does look like it's canceled. Councilman Branham, what do you have for Planning and Zoning?
It was canceled due to lack of agenda items. I will say that we are providing an update for the former plat at the 23rd council meeting per your request, President Smith. And that's going to be chaired by Mr. Forshner. So I do recommend coming to that. I do recommend inviting your neighbors to attend that. It is, you know, they can feel free to make comments during the comments section. Brian will answer any questions, but Brian is here tonight as well. So feel free to stick around after the meeting's over and talk to Brian as well. Brian's a great resource. He's, I've forwarded plenty of emails over to Brian about this, and he answers all the individuals' questions, so.
All right. Thank you very much for answering that question. Anyone have anything for Councilman Branham on Planning and Zoning? All right. Moving on to Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities. That committee literally just met two nights ago here in this room. So I'm going to give you a quick update because BRCA hasn't been real active due to a lot of cancellations of events because of COVID and other items. But first of all, we do have, it looks like we may have an opening on BRCA. So if anyone's interested in serving on that committee, please email our city clerk for that. And at this time, we do not have a representative from Xenia Community Schools that has attended that meeting, but we're looking forward to that to happen. So BRCA also currently works with several of the activities in Xenia. One was Bloom Xenia or Adopt a Spot. That's kind of gearing down now that the summer's over. So we'd like to thank those that have participated in that. Adopt a Spot, helping beautify downtown locations. Community Gardens at Lexington Park, that also is winding down. Those that have any, like, toadie cages or anything at the garden, they're requesting that that, those items be pulled by October 31st, or Public Service will do that for you. Fishing Derby at Shawnee Park. That event was canceled this year, and that was more canceled due to a lack of, we just not have a chairperson for that. The gentleman that normally has stepped up year after year, and I'd like to commend Mr. Patterson, just due to some health reasons, was not able to do that this summer. We are looking to bring that event back, tentatively, right now. That is scheduled for Saturday, June 4th of 2022 at Shawnee Park. And more information will come on that. And BRCA also works with the Downtown Merchants with the Community Christmas Event. So this year, I don't know if we have a slide for Christmas in Xenia. Right now, that's still in the preliminary stages. Our event is tentatively scheduled for Friday night, December 3rd, from 5:00 to 9:00 with attractions as far south as Xenia Station and as far north as downtown with a Santa House, some tree sales, a choir, walking characters, luminaries on the path to Xenia Station, hot beverage station, baked goods, Santa Paws with opportunities to interact with four Paws for Ability, carriage rides, and food trucks. Also, Double One Brewery located close to the Xenia Station will also be doing some entertainment that evening. So that's tentatively scheduled 5:00 to 9:00. Of course, that is what they're permitting all these events are. We have some other things that we're going to hopefully incorporate with that. Again, a lot of this is going to be tentative on the schools' ability to help participate and some volunteers there. So we'll give you more information on that. And then I did tell the city manager that I would talk about two other items. First off is, BRCA is also partnered with the Tree Committee. Tree Committee meets once a month and they report to BRCA in a regular meeting. Representative Mr. Nelson King has been an advocate for trees in our community for the last several years. The Tree Committee does two things. They do a heritage tree nomination every year. And this year, they're also doing a tree sale. And it's their first annual tree sale. Trees are available for purchase. You can go on the city's website. There is a link, if you go on the city's website and go into BRCA and then go under Tree Committee, there's an order form for trees. You can actually purchase these trees through the city, and funding of that will actually go to the Tree Committee to help purchase additional trees, to replace trees in our parks as necessary. And that tree sale actually ends on September, I apologize. It's coming up really soon, September 24th. So the trees will come in on Saturday, October 16th. And more information for that is on the website. So we're pleased to announce that tentatively scheduled right now is the Harvest on Main Street. And that'll be on Saturday, October 16th, from 2:00 to 7:00. That is, of course, dependent on the weather. But that, Mr. Mayorman, let be rain or shine.
Pretty much. More than likely, yeah.
Okay. So Harvest on Main, that's a new activity. City has kind of taken the initiative with First Fridays being down to supplement some things with doing a different type of activity quarterly. So Harvest on Main Street will start downtown. We'll have some craft booths, some food vendors. And right now, about 50 vendors have signed up to sell crafts. And that starts from 2:00, ends at 7:00. And, but I believe there might be some additional activities in the evening. I guess the mayor knows some of this.
I know the Vintage Toy Store is also going to be having some events that go out, go on through the evening until about 10:00 o'clock that night. They're spitting with some other stores, and I believe Double One on that block, they're going to have a costume contest, some different folks coming in. I don't have the details in front of me, but the Harvest on Main, that part of it is from 2:00 to 7:00 with a continuation on the other portion of Detroit there until 10:00 with Vintage Toy Stores.
Right. We'll have more information for the public on the city's website. Also, at the next council meeting on the 23rd, more things will be finalized by then. And then we'll also give you an update at our first meeting in October. But again, you know, if it's anything like the Fourth of July program, that just had phenomenal attendance and, you know, shop local, support downtown, come to the event if you can, and hopefully you'll be pleasantly surprised and have a good time at that event. So next is opportunity for council comments. I'm going to start to my right with Councilman Branham.
Nothing further, Dan.
Okay. Thank you very much. To my left, Councilman Scrivens.
Hi, Mr. President. Just want to say just a few words. We know 9/11 remembrance is coming up, and we should never forget. So that's what I'm going to say about that. It's something we all have a part in, and we all know what we have to do to continue. So 9/11, we'll never forget you. Also, Mr. President, the Xenia Buccaneers football team are 3-0 this year, and they play against unbeaten Pickla Friday night in Pickla. So we want to say, "Go Bucks!" and show them, show them who's the best. Also, Mr. President, we want to express our condolences to the family of Mr. John Schultz. He's a longtime member of the Zion Baptist Church on East Main Street here and a proud member of the Alpha Psi fraternity. And he was a mathematician and an engineer, and he was one of the silent voices that you never heard of that did an excellent job. So just want to say thank you to John Schultz for what you've done in my life. You've made a difference in me, and I thank you for it, sir. And then also, Mr. President, this month is disaster prepared this month. We don't have to say anything about being prepared for a disaster in Xenia. We should make our plans, have a go-bag, you know, be able to survive on our own for at least 72 hours. Don't think it won't happen to Xenia. It will. It has, and it'll happen to you. So it's best to be prepared and not to not be prepared. Also, our city planner is here, wanting him to take the rail for a minute. If he could, give us an update on the construction that's going on in the J T Henry Circle, if I could. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
If you have been out there recently, you'll see that the cement block, basically the core of the decorative walls and the sign are up. The next step is to put the decorative stone on the outside of that and the lettering and the signage. By contract, they're supposed to be done by the end of this month. And we are working on working with our public relations coordinator to plan a sort of small ribbon-cutting ceremony, invite some family members of James D. Henry, including his, I believe, James D. Henry, the second, third, and fourth.
That's great.
Actually, trying to get family members to attend it just for a commemoration of that. So we're working on that. That would be late in October, and we'll keep you posted on that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. City Planner. Thank you, sir.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, Councilman Scrivens. Mayor Mays.
Thank you, sir. A couple things of the last couple of weeks on, back in August on the 27th, was the final night of the Everybody Eats Week. Well, there was the Saturday morning, but the, at One Bistro, their big week of doing fundraising, having their celebrity servers. And we had an opportunity to go to dinner that evening, that Friday evening. They don't usually do dinner. The chef Greg was allowed to make whatever he wanted and have at it. So it was just a really great night, and I wanted to congratulate both Greg and Shane and the work that they're doing at One Bistro and thank them for such a good week of Everybody Eats Week. The 30th, of course, was the Neighborhood Night Out. I just wanted to thank city staff and our leadership, thank the council for all coming. It was just such a great night. The weather was perfect. Lots of people there, Central State, Ohio State Extension, the Xenia City Schools, Colonel Young, the National Monument, folks were represented, Uber Force, A I A, the library, and of course, our police department. I might be missing somebody, but just a great representation of our community. I think the kids, I know my kids, had a blast. They had so much fun. They love getting goodie bags, but they really loved what we did with the passport and getting the stamps so that we visit every booth and got to connect with different people there. So just wanted to thank the staff that has a lot of work and very thankful for a great evening. Today, had an opportunity to stop by the Fish Food Pantry and congratulate Gail and the Chamber Night that they had there. Gail's just done such a great job, and she's very thankful for the many partnerships, people who work with her donate. It's just, they're feeding a lot of people in Green County and Xenia. So very thankful for them. Of course, congratulations to Lieutenant Dill and his 20 years for service with our fire department. Very thankful for just the longevity and the consistent faithfulness of his work, so. I believe that is all I had. I had several, several other meetings that were just one-on-one meetings this week. It's been a busy couple of weeks, but that's, that's all I have to report this time.
All right. Thank you. Anyone have anything for the mayor tonight? All right. Very good. Thank you for that report. Vice President Dean, do you have anything for us tonight?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so before we close, just a couple of comments. So, Mr. Morris, thank you for being here. So to address the Hollywood subdivision on the Miller property, normally we don't interact like this. However, to bring you up to speed, okay. So that process happened through a P U D, which went through planning and zoning. Planning and zoning is a citizen committee chaired by Councilman Branham. That P U D, once that has been permitted, then the application process for the plat goes through the planning and zoning. And if I must speak, just jump in there. So that plat, just like tonight, we voted for the plat on Summerbrook. That plat has not yet been presented to council for vote or approval. So at this, it's not a done deal, per se. It was, the P U D is a done deal because due to our land code, they did go through the right process on that. So what I did is originally had scheduled a work session on the 23rd, but I've actually backed that off the agenda and asked for just a city staff report on the 23rd just to update us on how that process went in case any citizens in the Hollywood subdivision would like to come under public comments and speak to us that night and address their concerns about the plat. So that, that's the plan for the 23rd. Okay? So when that actual plat comes to council, I can't speak on that until we get that from planning.
If you don't mind, real quick, and the final P U D has not been submitted to Planning and Zoning Commission yet, just, just so that you're aware. So that, that final P U D is not, you know what I mean? That's not even on the docket yet for even our next month's meeting, as of yet. You know what I mean? It could still pop up, I guess, but I'm assuming that it probably won't, so.
So that's kind of why, it kind of hit us by surprise because we had not been aware of that P U D modification. And that's why some of us were like, I was just as surprised as you were when you announced that. And that's kind of our area. We should have probably been a little bit more up to speed on what planning and zoning's happened. But a lot of things, a lot of meetings in 2020 and 2021, unfortunately, were done through Zoom and through networking and not face-to-face. So that's kind of why that process happened there. So that's speaking on the plat. And then I'll let city staff handle your driveway issue as council. I have to defer that to our city manager and staff to talk to you about that. Okay? Sure. Thank you very much. So if we have no executive session scheduled for tonight, we have no work session scheduled for tonight. So at this time, unless anyone has anything else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Be careful. Good night, gentlemen.